Hello and welcome to tonight's Warner Robins Political Forum, sponsored by the Robins Regional Chamber, presented by 13WMAZ. We're getting ready to meet the three candidates for Warner Robins City Council District One. Now, this is a citywide seat, which means everyone gets to vote in this particular race. And the candidates, the incumbent Derrick Mack. We also have Leslie Morales and Jonathan Nichols. We want to thank them for taking their time to be here. They will be answering questions from our panelists. Kaitlin Heck, morning anchor with 13WMAZ, and David Danzy. He is vice president with Cadence Bank and also chair-elect for the Robins Regional Chamber. We appreciate them taking their time. And again, Election Day, November the 2nd, so now's a great opportunity to find out where the candidates stand. And we're getting ready to get underway right now. We will begin with two-minute opening statements. Mr. Mack, we will start with you.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity. The Regional Chamber of Commerce, they are the heart and pulse of this city through small business advocacy, and I'm just honored to serve in this capacity as I am the incumbent candidate. And I just want to serve in this capacity because I'm a public servant first. I'm a constituent second. And I just want to advocate for those and be a voice and a true liaison for the people in this city and encourage them to be engaged as we work to better our city in all areas as we are only as strong as our weakest link. I consider myself to be the boots-on-the-ground candidate as I'm a person that wants to see tangible growth, not talk about it, but be really about it and diffuse any divisions that we may have in our city because without togetherness, our city won't grow into its true destiny. Thank you.
All right, opening statement, two minutes. Ms. Morales.
Hi. I want to thank everyone for having me here today. This has been an incredible journey, a little interesting. And my name is Leslie Morales. I have been in Warner Robins since 1999. But one of the things that I wanted to mention is the numbers. We have a little over 50,000 registered voters in the city of Warner Robins, and in the special election, we received less than 5% of the vote out. I can't impress upon you more than anything that it is so important to get your voice out and be heard and vote. If we get 25%, we would be making such big changes in Warner Robins. My name is Leslie Morales. I am running for Warner Robins City Council Post One, and I would appreciate your vote on November 2nd.
All right, opening statement, two minutes. John Nichols.
Hi, I'm John Nichols. I've been here all my life. Most of my 57 years have been right here in Warner Robins. I've been a servant since I was in high school. I'm an '82 graduate of Northside. And starting back about 12 years ago, really got involved in the community per se and became a city councilman in Centerville in 2012. Served one term there. Serving on the board of directors at the chamber here from 2016, 2019. Glad to be a part of the Military Affairs Committee where I, right now, I'm part of the Honorary Commander's Program. I'm the Honorary Command Chief for the 78th Houghton Robbins Air Force Base, and I'm grateful and honored to be a part of that. Love this city, love this area, and just want to continue to serve. I've served on many boards. One of those is the Northside High School Council, School Council. I've been chairman there for about five years. I have served in the Optimist Club, the International City Optimist Club here in Warner Robins, where I'm a past chairman there also. Just thankful for the opportunities that I've had to be able to reach out. I'm very proud to say that the Optimist Club, we have two fundraisers a year. And this year, this past 12 months, even in the times we've had, we've given away to the youth of Houston County about $53,000, and that's a big deal. Very thankful and grateful to be a part of that. I ask for your vote because I want to continue to serve my community. I've been wanting to serve since I was in the fifth grade and look forward to serving, continuing to serve more.
All right, thank you very much for your opening statement. So now begin the question and answer portion. Our first question will come from Kaitlin Heck. Ms. Morales, you will go first with the question.
Warner Robins has grown tremendously. You can see it in the 2020 census numbers. How do you think city services are keeping up with that growth? And what does the city need to do to attract more and to prepare for more growth?
I appreciate that question, and I might have to ask you to restate it in just a second. But I do know that the city of Warner Robins has grown extremely in the last two years even. In trying to keep up with that, we really need to get more people involved. We need to find out what is it that we need to do to take care of the growth that we have here? What is it that the people need, that we need to provide to them? What are the decisions that city council can make that we can help you make that decision?
All right, Mr. Nichols, you're cracking the question about city services and keeping up with growth.
Very good. Looking for growth, looking to growth, I believe that there's many partnerships that can be looked into. I think that there are many developers that are able and ready to be able to come on board, to be able to help the growth happen, not only bringing outside businesses from, you know, around the nation and other parts into our city, but also partnering with the owners and the business leaders that are already here, giving them the same benefits that we do outside businesses to be able to bring them in and bring them in to build their businesses or expand their businesses even further.
All right, and we'll wrap up the question about city services and growth. Mr. Mack.
Thank you, sir. I really, to be completely honest, I feel as though that rapid growth has somewhat stressed our resources to include our public service, our resources to include water, natural gas, and sewage, and our ambulance services. What we need to do is try to increase our economic base to feed our economic enterprise funds so that we can hire more officials to include code enforcement, police officers, fire, and things of that nature to be able, so that we can support that growth properly. Our response times with our police are decreasing because they're covering more areas and more ground, and we need to find a way that we can create ample salaries for all those involved so that we can attract new officers, new resources, so that we can handle the new growth that we have.
All right, next question will come from Mr. Danzy, and Mr. Nichols, you will go first on this one.
So it's a two-part question. Do you consider Warner Robins specifically government and our licensing process business-friendly? And then, what steps would you take to make it more attractive for emerging entrepreneurs to make their businesses legally compliant with local requirements?
Well, first off, do I think that it is helpful to be able to bring them in? And is it easy to get through the licensing? I'll be real honest with you, I'm not there yet. I don't have that answer for you yet, sir. In order to find that out and know exactly how easy it is, I have listened to some of my friends, and sometimes it does become hard because we are very legalistic in our world today, and it makes it very difficult for anybody that's trying to open a business. I think we really stress them, and I think some of that can be changed to be able to help bring that business in quicker. As far as making it, well, I'm just trying to remember the second part.
Yes, the second part deals with making, excuse me, steps to make it more attractive for these emerging.
Make it more attractive. I believe that Warner Robins is very attractive. I think that we are the city that people need to come to, and I believe that what needs to happen, though, is we've got to have a place for them to not only live, but work and play, and I believe that the downtown district is where that can start to be able to bring those people into Warner Robins.
All right, question there. Mr. Mack, your turn.
The first thing I think we need to do is create an economic roundtable. We need to standardize the process. We need to reboot our website to make it user-friendly for the constituents and the budding entrepreneurs. There's no standard process. They go from one place to the next, with the next to the one place, and given different answers. So the process to start a new business can be a deterrent for you to continue on with the process. So my plan is to standardize it in what I would like to be called as the city repair-enhancement process and prioritize those things that were failing by gathering data and placing resource on where we're weak at and make it strong.
All right, the business-friendly question, Ms. Morales.
I do think that the process for small businesses is a little cumbersome. I know that there has probably been some obstacles to overcome in turnover with city employees. If you have someone who's been there for a really long time and knows the process and has it streamlined, it is much easier to get through and get your business license through that way. So I think that what we really need to do is work in retaining the right people in the right positions to make sure that when small businesses do come for their license and try and stay compliant, that they know who to go and ask, they know that the person that they're going to ask is knowledgeable in the area of small business licenses, and that they will get the help that they're looking for.
All right, our next question, Kaitlin Heck, and Mr. Mack, you will go first on this one.
We've talked a lot about bringing businesses to Warner Robins through a downtown or a city center. Is that something that you think is actually feasible? And if you do, what does that look like to you?
Well, I would like to, what I have dreamed about is creating a small business incubator and a qualified opportunity zone, and that will assist with attracting those areas in which you mentioned. There are people that are asking questions every day when I'm out and about within the city. What can I do to do this, to be a part of the city in that capacity? And the thing about it is to be engaged and to encourage the constituent to be engaged in those areas of concern because every issue that we have in the city, from largest to the smallest, is very valid and is very important to me, and I want to be an advocate for the people and all their concerns in that area.
All right, Warner Robins City Center, Ms. Morales.
Could you repeat the question, please?
There's been a lot of talk about developing a downtown area in Warner Robins. Do you think that's something that is actually feasible? And if so, what would that look like to you?
I 100% believe that that is feasible. I think that the downtown area of Warner Robins is a great, great place to start. I think that when we talk about building relationships with the base and keeping positive relationships with the base, that the downtown area is a big part of that, giving people on the base who live and work there, both civilian and military, a place to come to for entertainment, for shopping. Just in general, it's going to build stronger relationships in the city with the base. I think it is extremely possible, and I think that there are a lot of people in the city right now who have a lot of really good ideas on how that could look, and I look forward to hearing anybody give any ideas that they have as what they think it would look like.
Mr. Nichols, your turn.
I've been preaching this for a very long time. I am excited about the fact that, yes, I know without a shadow of a doubt, it is feasible. It is possible. There are developers, there are people that are ready to go. They just need to have the opportunity to go. They need to be able to get the plans that they have on the table right now and open them up so that we can move forward, and that comes with our city economics. And I'll be honest with you, in times past, that particular department has stood in the way. It is not allowed for those businesses, those developers, those partners to be able to move forward, starting with commercial circle, moving all the way down to Armed Forces Boulevard. I believe that we need to move forward and we need to make that happen. It is capable, but that comes from, and I'm very thankful, I'm very thankful that we have Kate Hogan. Kate Hogan is on fire, and she has the knowledge and the capability to make that happen.
All right, our next question from Mr. Danzy, and Ms. Morales, you will go first.
So Houston County is booming. Warner Robins is seeing exponential growth, but there's some inequities. How would you attract redevelopment opportunities into areas that have not seen the same level of investment?
That's a good question, and that's a tough question to answer. That is something that I would need to do a little bit more research into, for sure. I know that Houston County and Warner Robins have both grown extreme. And again, we just, we need to get more people involved. We need to get more people involved with their local government. The biggest impact that any person gets in their life is from local government and not necessarily any government outside of that. The biggest impact that we have is directly right here in the city of Warner Robins, and so the more people that we talk to, the more ideas that we get, and we become more aware of what their needs are, and they become more aware of what it is that we're doing for them.
All right, Mr. Nichols, addressing the question about inequities and development.
Okay, very much, and this kind of goes back to where we're at with the downtown development. That area's been left alone for, since it was built, to be honest with you. Again, with the North Davis, South Davis Drive, even Green Street, Lower Watson Boulevard. I mean, if you start at Houston Road and you go down Watson Boulevard, in all honesty, it really hasn't been touched too much. Now, there are some, Robins Regional Chamber, you've got Parish Construction, you've got some others that have come through here and have really done a fine job on redoing their buildings. I think there needs to be a partnership. I know there's grants out there. I know that we need to help them with not only refurbishing their area, but also with streetscapes, you know? There's lots of partnerships we can do with Flint and some other folks to be able to bring in new lighting and different things. I just think that that can be accomplished. We need to move on it, though, and we've got to have somebody in place.
We'll finish up this question, Mr. Mack.
Thank you, sir. Warner Robins is a very prosperous city, but there's a side of this city that's living in the shadows of prosperity. If you look at my hand as Warner Robins being a body, one finger is missing, and we need to fix that because, like I said before, we're only as strong as our weakest link. I'm an advocate for that area. I grew up in that area, and I have a vision of what the international city should look like, equity and inclusiveness for everybody. Where you find those blighted areas, you find a trail of millions of dollars. If we can redevelop that area and advocate for people to reinvest in that area, have a diverse community, and we need to show the people there that we care and that we're invested in their daily vision of what their communities look like so that it may resemble the one that's prosperous. Now, we need to create some type of opportunity zone to create a tax base where we can advocate for small businesses to come in and redevelop those areas. I'm a strong advocate for that, but community engagement, green space, and a host of those, a lot of areas in that area should be redeveloped and looked at very hard. It should be our priority in this city.
All right, our next question comes from Kaitlin Heck, and Mr. Nichols, you'll have this one first.
Code enforcement can be used as a tool, a proactive tool, to stabilize neighborhoods. How would you make sure that that department is staffed and has the tools that they need to be effective?
Well, to be honest with you, I can't tell you until I get in there, okay? I do know that they need all the help they can get. They need to be able to go into the areas that have been untouched and not messed with. I believe, I've got a plan, and I believe that if there's a building that's been sitting for more than three years and nothing's gone into it, I believe that if it's not cleaned up, it needs to go down to the ground. I believe without a shadow of a doubt, if there's a house, but I realize there's so many legalities that come into play in the middle of that that cause issues. Here's the thing, we have got to continue to work harder to be able to make sure that we improve those areas. And by leaving buildings such as the old Family Mart building that's sitting there for 15 years until Walmart came and leveled it and built a Walmart neighborhood grocery store, you know, we've got to be able to do that inside the city and not wait on somebody else to do that.
All right, question about code enforcement, Mr. Mack.
Thank you, sir. We just recently allocated our budget to hire more code enforcement officers. I am engaged with code enforcement as I talk to the officers whenever I see them. If I see them doing their work, I'll stop and communicate with them, and I understand their concerns. We need to really empower them any way that we can, and also with that being said, as I agree with Mr. Nichols in that area, we have a lot of out-of-town landlords that don't clean up their areas, and if they're not, if they're leaving it blighted, the city needs to go in, find them, hold them accountable, and if not, we need to assume responsibility of that and create community centers in those areas or whatever we need to do to advocate for that particular blighted area.
All right, we'll finish up the code enforcement question with Ms. Morales.
Well, I am absolutely 100% thrilled that we did receive some additional code enforcement officers in Warner Robins. I know that the code enforcement officers were severely overworked. There are a lot of areas that need to be stabilized in Warner Robins, and I think with the new people coming in, it'll be really a lot easier for our officers to go out and get to maybe understand some of the situations that are in these neighborhoods, not necessarily just going out to hand a letter and say, this is what you're doing wrong, you know? I know that our officers are very friendly, they're very in with the community, and they would like to speak with the citizens and know what it is that they can do to help. And hopefully with the additional officers, we'll be able to, you know, make a little bit more of a cleanup in the area, helping people do that, not necessarily just telling them and giving them a letter and saying that they have to do that.
All right, our next question from Mr. Danzy, and Mr. Mack, we'll start with you.
So y'all know I'm a banker. So, very simple question. How would you maintain fiscal responsibility, and are there any improvements that need to be made in that area?
Well, the first thing that I'd like to do is really take a look at all of our assets and manage them better. We need to manage our assets so we can see exactly where we're at fiscally with our funds and all those areas of concern. We can do this, but we have to vet our processes better. We have to prioritize and look at what it is that we have and what's working and what's not working. We need to cut a lot of fat out of our budget and lean out our processes, and I think we'll be fine in that area if we were to do that, but we need to really have the wherewithal and the due diligence to do the research and the audits necessary to be feasibly accomplished in that area.
All right, fiscal question, Ms. Morales.
Fiscal responsibility, I think we've all had to deal with that recently. I think that there is a lot that I could bring. I'm a regular 99 percenter, and I know that there is, everybody talks about transparency in government, and I think that that is one of the things that we really need to elaborate. We need to make people more aware so that we can be fiscally responsible, we can use our budgets wisely, and we can put them where they need to go. Do we need to cut some of the budget? Probably so. I think everybody in the last year or so has had to do that due to COVID and, you know, lack of income. So yes, I think we do need to do that, and I think as city council and mayor together should be able to do that and listen to people, what they have to say, where they think it should be, and make them aware. If they don't understand all of the budget, let's sit down and talk about it. Let's bring you to a city council meeting. Let's make the city council work for you so that you understand exactly where every penny goes in the city.
All right, we'll finish up fiscal responsibility. Mr. Nichols.
Thinking about fiscal responsibility is a big deal. It's one that you've definitely got to be a city councilman before you can even look at fiscal responsibility. I believe that with my past history, my past resume, I believe that I'm able to do that working with fellow city councilmen, working with the mayor, the city administrator, you know, and somewhat with the department heads. We've got to make sure that every penny that's being spent inside of those departments are being spent correctly. I don't think we might be doing that. Now, I don't know for sure, but I'm just thinking out loud. There may be money that you can take from one to be able to help another. There may be areas, the only thing is, you've only got a certain amount of the pie, okay? That certain amount of pie, the only way to change that is go up on taxes or reduce where you're spending it. And so I think that we really need to look at every aspect of where the money's going and then see if it's being spent correctly.
All right, next question from Kaitlin Heck. Ms. Morales, we'll start with you.
Ms. Morales, you touched on transparency a moment ago. What can Warner Robins do to be more transparent and to also bring more people into the decision-making process?
I do believe that the transparency is extremely, it needs to be more. I think that we need to get more people involved. I think that the system itself is not necessarily the most easily laid out. Some people don't understand it, so they have questions about it, and who do they turn to to answer those questions? I think the city councils should be forefront in getting out with their constituents, finding the people, the citizens, and talking to them about what it is that they don't understand. How can we bring you in? What is it that we need to do to make you more involved? I also believe that the website, revamping the website is also a good start, as Mr. Mack said, because you try and navigate, and maybe you don't necessarily get to where you think you're trying to go. So yeah, absolutely, we need to get more people involved, and that could be done through, you know, through the website, a little easier laid out for people, and definitely talking to everyone in the city.
All right, transparency, Mr. Nichols.
Well, we are a representative-type government. We are elected as a city councilman. There's six of those. There's one mayor, and then there's now a city administrator. There does need to be, voices heard from every constituent that feels like that they want to be a part of that. I'm very proud of what council has done about bringing in the new group that has been put together to be able to have those voices heard, and I hope it is utilized in the way that it seems to be working already. I do know this, you have 100 people in a room, you can't listen to all 100 people. You can't. So that's why you need to be involved with the people that are on city council to make sure that your voice is heard through them, because everybody's not going to be heard. You already get the opportunity to come to city council and be heard there, and I'll be honest with you, it's very minute of the people that come there already. They need to be more involved.
All right, government transparency. Finish up this question with Mr. Mack.
Thank you, sir. With the work that the city administrator has done, we've created what we like to call, it's called a city, I mean, a citizens advisory board, where each one of the councilmen has appointed someone so that we can be in communication with people directly with the community, and it's working. They're vetting their concerns, they are talking directly to us so that we can address them appropriately. One thing that I would like to see is during the council meeting, I would like to see more involvement from the citizens and open our chambers back up, and if we can't do it at city hall, we need to probably utilize the civic center while practicing social distancing so that everyone can have their voice be heard. But that citizens advisory board through Engage Warner Robins is the best thing we've done since I've been on council because people, there are applications on the website. If you want to be involved, fill out that application and throw your name in ahead because we still have a few positions left so that you can be an advocate for this community in which you live and represent.
All right, we have time for one more question. That question will come from Mr. Danzy, and we'll start with Mr. Nichols.
So what can the city do to support Robbins Air Force Base? And could the city do anything differently to better capitalize on the base's economic impact?
That's a great question. I appreciate that, and I'll be honest with you, we're doing everything that we can to partner with Robbins Air Force Base. I am very proud, as I said in my opening, I'm very proud to be a part of the community and the Robbins Air Force Base leadership coming together and learning from each other. I love the opportunity to sit with my partner over on the base, Chief Labrador, and be able to sit down with him at lunch and find out what we need to do. I'll be honest with you, there's still stringent controls that are in place because of what we've gone through the last year and a half that are causing that to not be able to happen like we should. I do know when I was a city councilman, man, there was great meetings that were had in prior years that were able to open up more conversation and be able to work closer. I think we're listening to them, I think they're listening to us, and they're giving us good feedback. I think we need to continue to do that in a very profound way to not lose that partnership.
All right, Robbins Air Force Base Partnership, Mr. Mack.
Thank you, sir. I'm a 25-year employee of Robbins Air Force Base. I talk to the leaders on a daily basis as I work in a very rigid pace with the F-15 functional test, 561st Maintenance Squadron. I've communicated those concerns in trying to strengthen our relationship with Robbins as Robbins Air Force Base is one of the greatest assets in the state of Georgia and that right here in our backyard. And to be honest, I don't think we've done enough to strengthen that relationship because if you go on the website, GMA website, we're supposed to be redeveloping the G-Ramp process, which is a joint use of the runway, and I do understand that some of the missions at Robbins has changed, so there are some restrictions there. But if we could advocate for G-Ramp, that's something that's supposed to be ongoing at this point, I think it would even develop a mission partnership that would really enhance our community, our growth, economic base, which we need desperately. We have approximately 93 acres that we purchased north of the runway that's supposed to help us with that process. We just need to meet at the table to discuss it and put that plan to work.
All right, we'll finish up this question. Robbins Air Force Base, Ms. Morales.
Robbins Air Force Base, it's, you know, in our name. Absolutely. I think that one of the things that we could do to strengthen some relationships with Warner Robins, Robbins Air Force Base, is to possibly bring back some town hall meetings, communicate, communicate with leadership on base, communicate with leadership of our city. We need to be a back, there needs to be a back and forth. We need to know what it is that they need, we need to know, they need to know what it is that we need, or the expectations from both sides. Again, I think that we can foster a lot of relationship by providing something to the base. Commercial circle, straight down to Armed Forces Boulevard, refurbish that, rebuild it up, and make it a community that the base wants to be involved in and with. And again, town hall meetings, listen to what it is that they need, listen to what it is that they have to say.
All right, we're going to finish this up. Again, Warner Robins City Council, District One, citywide, with closing statements, one minute. Mr. Nichols, you will start first.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm honored to be a candidate. I am not running against these two people. I am applying for a job. I've got a resume of service. I want you to look at my resume and see if that's what you want to be able to sit in the post of, post one city council of Warner Robins, Georgia. I asked for your vote, but I first ask you to go out and vote. We need you to be engaged, and the way you do that is by placing your voice behind your vote. It is ongoing right now of early voting, but November the 2nd is the date that you go out and vote, and I'm asking you, please, get out of your house, go and place your vote on November the 2nd.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. One-minute closing statement.
Well, one minute isn't really a lot of time to give a closing statement, so I definitely want to say that there is a lot more that I want to hear from the citizens of Warner Robins, and there's a lot more that I have to say that I would like to try and implement into the position as well. So I urge you, please, go to Facebook, go to Leslie M. for City Council. My phone number is on there. Give me a call, let's text, let's find out what it is that you want, and hopefully what I have to say will be something that you are looking to hear, and hopefully you will vote for me on November 2nd.
And we'll finish up closing statements, Mr. Mack.
Thank you. As the incumbent candidate since March, I've learned a lot. It's a learning curve, but I've learned a lot, and I've learned what this city needs in city, this city needs community engagement. I want to represent you as I want to, I'm a constituent first, but I'm a liaison of the people of this city at city hall. I want to represent you.